City Council to our political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best will with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy City Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Pro Tem's hearing.
Here.
Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Councilmember Hornco.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
Councilmember Gustin.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
What's that name?
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is a time when citizens may speak on the items which are on the agenda for this evening. Are there any citizen comments? Seeing none, we now have come to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, approval of payroll, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Deputy Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Councilmember Hornco.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem's hearing.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Let's see, unfinished business, we have none. New business, there is none. Notices, communications, and announcements. Tonight, we will have a report from the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Stacy Bytworth will report on the activities of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and respond to any questions the council may have regarding your activities. No action is required on this item.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stacy.
The mission of the chamber is to advance and support the interests of the businesses in Manistee County for a more prosperous community. I've been in my position for a little over four months now, so I've put together kind of what we've been doing the last four months. The next slide is going to be why it's important to you, chamber member. These are some of the chamber membership benefits that come along with being a member. There's access to meeting space that the chamber provides. There's advocacy, business networking through our business opportunities at different locations that we hold monthly. We do a Chamber E newsletter that goes out weekly to all our chamber members. And since we've kind of changed the format with that, we've seen a 10% increase in people reading that, so that's been really good. Also, we're doing promotion, communications, ribbon-cutting ceremonies. As you can see, we did a ribbon-cutting ceremony with one of the gyms in town. So these are some of the opportunities that we provide to chamber members. Our chamber board consists of 15 members. We have an executive board of four. Sean Adams is our new board chair this year. Each board member is very active in the events that the chamber puts on. Two board members are good at the event. And also, I keep my board updated weekly with emails on kind of what's going on, what retention I've done with members, what new members that I've got to join the chamber as well, so they know exactly what's going on with the chamber at all times. Funding for the chamber comes solely from the business community. 50% comes from the events that the chamber holds annually, and 42% comes from all the businesses and their membership dues. Longevity of the chamber, this year is our 98th year. So in 2016, we'll be celebrating 100th year anniversary, so that's very exciting for the chamber. Origins of our strength, these are the different areas that our membership businesses and partners come out of. As you can see, Manistee is the largest, but we also have surrounding communities that we have businesses and partners that join the chamber as well. Membership classification, we kind of broke it down into which businesses are part of our chamber. So as you can see, there's different, the 30% comes from another category, which we have a lot of people that are like our financial institutions, our schools and things like that make up that greater category. Volunteer resources, we have three different groups that help out the chamber. Our ambassadors are one. That group is 15 members that are trained, which help with member recruitment, business retention, hospitality. Our promoters are senior volunteers that help out at all of our events, specifically our business after-hours. They'll be the people that greet you when you come in the door, they take your business cards and things like that, so we really appreciate the help that they offer to the chamber. And then also, we have our score group, which is an organization of 12 volunteers that help out to assist people who want to start a business here or have an existing business in the community that need assistance. Advocacy, we are reforming our Government Affairs Committee. This committee's function is to research issues that affect businesses in our community. So we are restarting that group and working to start to meet in the next couple of weeks. Bite-sized business, these are free educational programs that the chamber is trying to offer to members on a monthly basis. As you can see, there's three that we have. We've already had our work size wellness, and motivating Generation Y is the next one that's coming up, and then an employer talent training. I just wanted to highlight the motivating Gen Y because that's going to be our bite-sized business opportunity that's going to be on Thursday. And again, it is free to chamber members, and there is a small fee of $25 to non-chamber members or potential members. Business after-hours is our networking opportunities that are held once a month, so I've listed the different locations that they will be held at for 2014. We try to branch out to the entire county and hold them in different communities. 2014 chamber events, these are a list of the annual events that we're going to be holding this year. And the first one coming up is Pampier Professional, which is the admin professional lunch that'll be held on April 23rd. And the next one, I want to highlight is Grapes on the River. That is actually going to be taking place during the Salmon Splash weekend this year. We've kind of partnered with them and pulled it out of Forest Fest to put it into a different category, and we're also going to be offering a sunset cruise that people can be raffled off and they can sail off after the event, so we're kind of excited with that. And then the biggest one we've changed is our Business Expo. We've sat down and kind of taken a look at everything from last year and how the event went. We did a survey, we kind of sat down with West Shore Bank because they are sponsoring the event this year. And we changed the date, we altered the time a little bit, and we've expanded the format to offer 100 booths and did a tiered option, so it's more feasible for smaller businesses and nonprofits to join the expo. Involvement and support, the chamber is involved in a lot of partnerships, different committees that we're on, and then also, we partner with different community events that we assist and help out with, and I've listed them there for you. Chamber staff consists of Diana Wall, who's the Executive Assistant, and Jeanette Berta, our Business Manager. Each of them have over 20 years of experience, and they've helped me greatly in my position. And I've left my contact information for you if you need to go to hold of me. Please feel free to email me, call me, stop in the office where all, our doors are always open, and thank you for allowing me to come speak here.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions with Stacy?
No, I think she's doing a good job.
Okay.
I think it's what we hear all over.
I have a quick question, Stace. How are we collaborating with other chambers in the, you know, surrounding areas?
Actually, I've met pretty much all the different chamber directors in the surrounding area, so I've had lunch meetings with Mary Carroll from Benzey County. The Springfield Chamber Director was actually at our business after-hours. So her and I kind of were sharing some ideas because we are smaller chambers that kind of, a lot of our funding comes from events, so her and I are going to have lunch too and kind of work through that. And then the Traverse City Chamber Director, the Cadillac Chamber Director have actually reached out to me, so if we need help with our government affairs, they're there to assist as well. And then I've also met with Kathy McLean in Lexington. We've had lunch and worked with West Shore Community College on some events.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the Mayor Pro Tem for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizen comments tonight? Yes, Mr. Sang.
Ed Sang, address 448 East Cairo. I'm back. At the zoning planning commission meeting, they recommended to me or Denise and Mr. Deech that we sit down and get this, talk about cash flow. So I'm here tonight asking to be put on the work session or be able to sit down with a couple council members and Mr. Deech to get this resolved. I have been through the development agreement. I don't know how many times your city attorney has made comments that this agreement in here stated that this agreement is between the city and myself, and not with the city and Reith Riley. I am asking for the work session or to be able to sit down and talk to council members and Mr. Deech about this, to resolve this issue. That's all I got to say, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So you're asking to be put on another workshop, Eddie?
I'm asking to be on a work session to discuss, to discuss this matter, or to be able to sit down with council and Mr. Deech, and not all council, but representatives to get this problem resolved.
We've already taken a vote on it.
Yeah, and the whole board wasn't here, Mr. Hornco. Two members were absent. It went 3-3.
Mr. Hornco, it was a, it wasn't 3-3. It was 3-2. 3-2. 3-2 because there was, yeah.
So I guess I'm asking, there's other ways to go about this, but I feel that this would be the best way we could all sit down and discuss this.
Well, you're, you're meeting with the planning commission, you're meeting with the planning commission, and until we have a recommendation, one way or another, from the planning commission, I really don't see how council can proceed.
The, the planning commission recommended that I come back to council and sit down and work or talk about this issue.
Councilmember Whitlock and I were both at that, that planning commission meeting. My recollection of it was slightly different. I asked a direct question of the planning commission. They had discussed the fact that absent the development agreement getting rectified, there really wasn't much that they could do from a zoning standpoint. Please jump in any time, Councilmember Whitlock.
We, we asked for a study.
You asked for increased time for the planning commission to consider the request on a zoning scenario and asked us to provide additional information. Traffic count studies.
On the road lifetime.
On the road lifetime, correct. So that information is, I believe Ms. Blakely has already provided that to the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's already been provided. There was some conversation among Commissioner Crockett and Commissioner Berry, Planning Commissioner Crockett and Planning Commissioner Berry, in regards to, absent the development agreement getting resolved, we're not sure where we're at as a planning commission. I asked a question directly of them. Were you, were you directing me or asking me to, to meet with Mr. Sang? And they both said, that's not what we're asking you to do. Now, I don't have a, an issue with sitting down with Mr. Sang in, in doing so, but I don't believe the planning commission, that was their direction. But, but again, we were both at the same meeting. I don't have the minutes directly in front of me.
I know, right, so.
So, but I believe that was the direction. Their point being, from my perspective, being at that meeting, is, is there's two separate issues here, the issue of the development agreement and the issue of the zoning ordinance. And they felt that the issue of the development agreement needed to be resolved, but, but it was nothing that they could do regarding the development agreement.
Who resolves the development agreement, then? The council. The council, and I think we did.
I understand that, Councilmember Hornco. I understand you voted on it. Mr. Sang is asking, based upon the fact that we had two council members absent from that particular meeting, I think he would like to see you either retake up that particular task, to look at it again, number one, and please correct me if I'm wrong, sir, or number two, direct the administration to, to meet with Mr. Sang to see if there's a way that we could come up with a resolution. From my position, council's already voted on it.
We had a vote.
So absent, so absent council providing some additional direction, from my position on a, as an administrator, you've already voted on that particular item. But, but if direction is granted or given by the majority of council to form a small subcommittee and go back and discuss it again, then I'd work at your pleasure.
I would wait for them here to come back to enter into that, any discussion on that.
Has there been any new information provided to, to city of, regarding the, you know, development agreement or the request, or has there been any developments that would dictate another vote or?
Not, not that I have seen.
I guess, you know, there's always going to be meetings that somebody's going to be absent and they're, they're not going to take a vote, you know, or they can't vote. How many times, how many times do you vote? You know, if, say it went your way, then one of the council members could say, well, I want another vote on it, so, you know, you could go back and forth.
I, I understand that, Mr. Hornco. I'm asking, I read the paper, I've seen your budget constraints, I read the mission statement of the, the council, the strategic plan is to help create jobs, and that's what this is about, sir. And, and like it or not, we all know the situation in the city is two to five jobs occur, no it's not. But maybe it's a start in the right direction, and that's what I'm.
You know, I'm not, I'm not against jobs. I'm all for job creation in the county or anyplace. And that's the misconception that some people have, that this county, or certain members of the council are not for job creation. That's farthest from the truth. My, I was brought up here in Manistee, my dad worked at Morton's Salt, my brother worked at BCA, I worked at Drop Forge, or at General Chemical for a long time, you know. I'm for jobs, but I think there's alternatives for you to create jobs in your other, in your other piece of property down by Sentry Boat.
Sir, we, it's not economically possible, the, the cost of trying to do what I'm asking to do down there, or asking to do able-to-shipwood. When you start handling materials, the cost of the material goes up. It doesn't make it viable to put that much cost onto a material to handle. Everybody's working on such slim margins now. The infrastructure where I'm at is in place, the, the room that is needed to pile that type of material, and we're not talking 30-foot tall piles, we're talking 16-foot to do it safely. The material is back out of the way, it is not even seen by the roadway. It's a unique piece of property, better situated to do that operation, and it's not cost prohibitive.
Is there, what about the Reith Riley? That's a deep water port. And General Chemical, that's a deep water port.
Reith Riley is a deep water port. General Chemical is not a deep water port, sir. The General Chemical property has white shovel water. I, I don't know what more I can say. I know that Potlatch Corporation has talked with Reith Riley, but there is also other operations that I have talked to about moving material in and out of Manistee, that they would like to spill, sit down at the table and talk and look at doing contracts, but at this time, I'm stifled from pursuing any of them.
Are you in the process of, has somebody approached you, approached you to buy the property?
No, sir. I have talked to some people. Kathy Adair Morgan said that she had a developer in Manistee that was looking at a different project and looked at it, but did not contact me at all, sir, or my real estate agent.
Was that your property on the peninsula?
Pardon?
Your property on the peninsula?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that that property can't be developed or shouldn't be developed, but I'm asking at this point in time to be able to go back to work and still pursue them avenues, but with the economic times, I don't see it happening right away. Maybe in five years, in seven years, maybe 10 years, I don't know. But to be able to go to work and create jobs, I think is more important now than hoping and sitting and waiting for a developer. And I'm not a developer.
Well, you know, my other concern is, you know, we spent, we spent a lot of money down in the peninsula.
Yes, you did, sir.
We spent a lot of money on it.
And, and I understand that. In the streets now, you spend a lot of money because you had to separate the sewer and water.
And we put a new.
And you put in new streets because the old streets left, and you brought them up to Class A standards, which is better now than the inch and a half of blacked out that was there for the 30 years that I ran on previous. And they are, they are built, that, will the life of the road go down? Yes, it is. But we're not talking about running 100 trucks a day across it. We're talking running five to six trucks, maybe eight? Say six as an average? And yes, that is a start. Would that bring other business? Yes. But I believe that there is things that can be done and talked about to ensure your roads.
Well, my position here is, is I would like to see this steel thing pop up, this thing from Mr. Blank, and his comment was about a secondary storage in case his business weight takes off, I realize it's just going to be a cap, and then they're going to try to blossom up to like 320 jobs, and there might be additional shipping of steel, and they need an alternate point. I support that position of Mr. Sang being a deep water port to support that steel, the potential steel manufacturing. That's my position here. Like the mission from the very beginning has been my position all the way through. I guess we have to look at the, the best possible use for that property at, at this point, and it is creating jobs.
My, my concern is zoning isn't for just one business owner. Zoning and planning is for the betterment of the community, the betterment of the entire peninsula, and we can't always just chase zoning, change zoning based on one, one business owner. That's, that's not a fair way to do that. Now, I would be open to getting a dialogue going that involve the entire community down there and, and discuss that, but I, you know, we don't have that forum yet, and until we get, you know, consensus that that's the right development for that, that entire peninsula, and not just Mr. Sang, which I respect that you're trying to bring jobs there, but it has to be fair for everybody down there.
And I understand that. And it was done there, there are eight or nine other businesses down in that area. I think they are all open to development of the area. But is the, there's, there's two different issues here. One is the memorandum of understanding and one is the zoning.
The development agreement, not the MOU. The MOU was crafted into the development agreement, so it's the development agreement which is the governing document.
Okay, which says also the MOU.
It incorporates it with the development agreements, right.
So I, I understand your point, you know, about zoning and stuff like that, but it's nothing different.
I just have one more question, and maybe the city attorney can answer that. We, if we change the zoning down there, chances are Reith Riley's going to sue. You know, whether they have any standing or not, I don't know, but they're going to drag the city into the lawsuit, I'm, I'm sure of that. And that's going to, you know, that's going to, we're going to incur a lot of money defending our position.
Right. And, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hornco, but in, in the development agreement, their disagreement is between the city and Sang and the city and Reith Riley. There's two separate agreements here.
I, I, I realize.
I understand what you're saying. The zoning issue is a separate issue, and I understand, I can see where Reith Riley would be coming from, but they're not the only ones that can start lawsuits. And I don't want to go there. I've been through them, I know what it costs, I know what it does to me, and I can imagine what it would do to the city. The financial constraints of the city are astronomical right now. That's why I'm asking to be able to sit down and talk about this.
And if we, can I, can I please have a moment?
Let George finish answering the question. Let George answer.
Yes.
I'm not sure what the question was, but yeah, the, what we have discussed at previous meetings, and this is just citizen comment, I think, at your council meeting, not a debate, but what we've talked about before is the concern that if the city were to amend the development agreement, that it would expose the city to potential liability from Reith Riley. They've clearly indicated that they intend to challenge any attempt by the city to amend the development agreement or amend the zoning ordinance. What we have discussed is that, based upon that, is that we may initiate a lawsuit ourselves and ask a court to declare whether or not the city, without Reith Riley's consent, could amend that development agreement. But we would only pursue that, obviously, if council would have given the approval to go forward with amending the development agreement, and we haven't received that as yet.
The answer, yeah.
Right, and so, I, I think that, I don't think there's a clear answer one way or the other as to whether or not the city has the ability to consent to an amendment of a development agreement with just Mr. Sang and the city making that agreement, or whether Reith Riley has to be part of that. I don't think there's a clear answer on that.
My question was, if the zoning is changed, for that one specific property in the Peninsula District, that zoning cannot be changed then? It is.
We can't, we can't spot zone. It wouldn't be for that one particular property.
It would be, but the whole district would be rezoned for one specific property, however.
Well, I, it'd be, the request was for that property, but let's say that the zoning change was approved, and I don't know one But let's say that the zoning change was approved and I, I don't know one way or the other, whether the planning commission would recommend it and whether this council then would, would adopt that or not. The fact remains that the development agreement is.
Of course.
You, you'd need both, you'd need both of those things to happen in order for shipping to occur at Mr. Singh's property, not just one. And, and I know he knows that too, so.
But going back to the zoning, what the request was for to add shipping and storage to the peninsula district.
Use by right.
Use, correct. Thank you very much. Use by right for that. So that's the request in front of the planning commissioner, was in front of the planning commission, was to amend the zoning ordinance to allow, to allow shipping and storage as a use by right within that district. If the direction you were going into is once that, that particular change occurs and if that activity starts up, then at that point in time, will that particular use carry with the land even if other zoning changes were made? The answer to that question is yes. That would then be considered. If you made a change to go away from shipping and zoning again X number of years down the road, that use by right.
Is spelled in.
It is. And on all of them, the, the, the use of that land, the use continues with the land.
So five, seven, ten years.
Until it's exhausted, until it's exhausted for a one-year period of time where no activity was occur, then that, I call it grandfathered, um, pre-existing legally non-conforming use, whichever you choose to call it, then would be exhausted and would, would end. But it would have to have a one-year lapse where that activity did not occur for that to, for that change, zoning to occur. I'm, I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
Didn't Ed just ask, just for a sit-down meeting, didn't ask this change in his own, he asked to be able to sit down and talk? I think that's what you came and asked.
Yes, sir.
We went off the other way. I don't think, it's not too much to ask a man to sit down and talk with you, anybody else in the council. I don't, I don't think that's wrong to ask. Doesn't mean we're to give him his answer he wants.
Right.
We still, still should be allowed to talk.
I don't have a problem with him sitting down and talking, you know. It's not going to change anything as far as, you know, as far as I'm concerned, but if he wants to sit down and have a talk and discuss it, I don't have a problem with it.
He may have new like, new issues. I don't know.
Right.
I mean, I had a meeting with him today. I'm not going to hide that, you know, I sat down and talked to him.
What happens three years down the road, you sell the property to another business? He could, he could haul anything in there then. He could put aggregate piles.
Uh, I believe you're, you're right, Mr. Hunkel, uh, but there's also can be things that limit the, if it's construction aggregates, which was originally talked about in the memorandum of agreement. I mean, it can be materials and not be construction aggregates. There, there's, there's different wording, different languages, different materials.
Could be coal piles.
I, no, I would argue against that one because I don't think that that's the best use of that property. There are other places that coal can go. Uh, Reith Riley stores petroleum coke right now and I did it before that and we had coal there, but it is down out of the way. It is not, that area down at that end of the lake is not subject to the winds and stuff that are at the other end of the lake.
That would still be a use by right and your, the question to your answer is yes. If, if you rezone that and the development agreement was amended, then that activity could occur because that would be a use by right.
But that, correct, but you could negotiate that? Is that the term?
I don't believe so. Not in the zoning ordinance. It would be a use by right. Two thoughts. My, my first thought is, is that I'm not exactly sure how we would select individual council members to, one, to sit in and discuss that with Mr. Singh and talk about this. My second thought is, is that I see that as an administrative function at this point in time. So I would see that probably the first step would be to have Mr. Saylor and I sit down with Mr. Singh and, and talk those issues through, and then I keep counsel abreast.
Yes.
About the particular issues as well as Mr. Singh would keep counsel abreast as to the particular issues. But from, from, from my position right now, council has made a decision. Council has made a decision and I'm bound by that decision, mind you. It's not whether I like the decision or don't like the decision. I'm bound by the decision council made in, in regards to that particular issue. If something is dramatically different, then I think that that naturally is different and council would want to know about any of those differences, which may be different now than based upon what you voted on previously, but, um, that would be my suggestion or recommendation to council.
I am, I, I, I don't, I don't know this, is what I'm going to ask the question. Question is, but Eddie, I, the whole concept is, Mr. Singh wants us to reconsider discussion that we had, what was it, a month ago on, on the vote. Is this?
I don't know how long though.
The meeting before, the meeting before that, whatever. Took the vote. Can this be reconstructed? I don't know. I don't know this stuff. Can that be re-brought up? That, that's the end. That's the question. That's what he's looking for.
There's a Robert's Rules of Order issue that could arise here.
Huh?
There is a Robert's Rules of Order portion where we can revisit, isn't it?
One of the, one of the members from the, the winning prevailing side of the previous motion.
Asked to have it brought back for a vote, then you can. But none of you would do that when we were doing Arthur Street so that Bob and I, who were absent, could vote on it.
And that, and that's my, and that's my point, you know.
Yeah.
Somebody's always going to be absent, not always, but, you know, for either side. And, and how many votes do you take?
Let's, let's, let's do this. How about, how about with, with council's blessing, George and I will set up and Mr. Singh will sit down, we'll, we'll go over the entire issues again and bring back, and bring back the, the information to council for you to have once again to see if you believe there's enough information to reconsider your previous decision. February 11th, I believe someone, Councilwoman Wilson said, so February 11th was the date of that, so little over a month ago, and see if there's a difference of opinion among city council members to look at this or not. Having said that, what George, the city attorney just said is, is you would have to have one of the prevailing party members, prevailing individuals on that vote, one of those three members to vote against it to bring that out of.
Yep. It would be one of the four members that voted for.
It was only three. We had five in the meetings. There was three who voted.
Gotcha.
Right.
That was the eighteenth.
It was the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
I'm sorry. Thank you. That's her name. So, so still just right around mine.
But I just wanted to make, make it very clear that I am not against jobs or job creation. I'm all for jobs and job creation regardless what Gary Petulski or his sister Judith Carl or Ilona Hayden says. I am not against job creation. I think there's a place for it and, uh, and that's, you know, let's see where it goes from here.
We'll get that meeting set up and we'll report back to council.
No, I got a question about that. Then does that meeting that come before a work session to have frank dialogue about it, or does that meeting come, does that update come back on, on an agenda-related item and is it voted on again?
I can't imagine that I would put it on an agenda-related item to have you vote on that again because I wouldn't know whether or not I would get one of the three.
Right.
Decisions to do so. How I would probably do it, put that information back in session for your discussion. That's how I believe it'd be the most appropriate way of moving forward.
I would like it done sometime after the seventh of April.
That shouldn't be a problem because our work session won't be until.
The, the.
Work session in April is going to be the.
Eighth.
April eighth is the work session in April.
Will that work, Bob?
Uh, yes, I will be, yes.
Let me just double-check something real quick, folks.
First we do, I'm going to be gone. I'm going to be back.
Some folks are probably going to hate on that.
Right.
And, and it's impossible to work around everyone. I mean, we'll schedule it. I'm trying to think of the upcoming agendas. I sent it around this last week. I just want to look and see what April looks like.
How about you have the meeting?
Yep.
Just have the meeting.
Yep.
First step, yeah.
April eighth will be the work session.
Just.
If you'd like to call it.
Just talk to the guy.
Yep. We'll schedule that before tonight's hour, before later.
Okay.
Everybody settled on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Concerns and comments, officials and staff, deputies.
Were there any?
Oh, we already did citizens. Were there any other citizens that wanted to make comments? Then we'll follow up with officials and staff, deputy city clerk.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Deputy.
Thank you. Any others in attendance? No. Councilmember Cody.
I'm about to have you say Patty's Day. Weird.
Aaron Gobera. Councilmember.
I just want to advise you that I will be gone on the first of April.
So don't play an April Fool's story.
We're leaving Wednesday morning. We won't be back until the seventh.
Take care.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that people from out of town know this so I don't get chastised for it on the internet.
Have you seen Patty's Day? I also will be gone the week of the 31st through the 6th.
Councilmember.
Nothing.
Nothing, thank you. I have nothing also. May I have a motion to.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Seventy-nine.